Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for March 4th, 2019. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bevier.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
And Alderman Hoffman is excused.
Thank you, Josie. Would you please stand as you are able to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the time that we set aside at every meeting for citizens' comments. We have one person who has signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. In TIF III and TIF IV, the City of Warrenville stated that it was not required to have impact studies from the fire district and the park district. But what does the state statute identify? Sixty-five ILCS five-eleven dash seventy-four dash four dash three states the following: Each redevelopment plan shall set forth in writing the program to be undertaken to accomplish the objectives and shall include but not be limited to the following. Section C. An assessment of any financial impact of the redevelopment project area on or any increased demand for services from any taxing district affected by the plan and any program to address such financial impact or increased demand. So what happens when the city doesn't follow the state statute? The individual taxpayers outside TIF III and TIF IV are forced to pay for the services of the hundreds of individuals that will fill the apartments in the townhomes. A movement of taxes to the individuals outside the two TIF districts. This is not an acceptable option.
Thank you. We'll move on to officials' staff comments, beginning with the mayor. A couple of things this evening. One, we're finally doing the gazebo dedication to former Mayor Rich Volkmer this Wednesday at 11:00 a.m. We've been working on this for a while, so it's kind of nice to get it accomplished. Rich was one of the people that made that gazebo happen many years ago. We're pleased to honor him with dedicating the gazebo in his name. So again, that's Wednesday morning, 11:00 a.m. We'll have the dedication out by the gazebo and then some refreshments inside afterwards. If you missed my State of the City address, which was last week, it is available on Channel 10 and YouTube. Our Assistant City Administrator Christina White will tell you how to access both of those things.
Okay, so on YouTube, if you search youtube.com in your browser search engine, search for City of Warrenville, the first item that will come up is the City of Warrenville YouTube page with our logo. If you click on that, that will show you every meeting, including the State of the City, that is available on the city's YouTube channel. It is also on Channel 10. The schedule for the replay is available on the city's website at warrenville-il.us.
Great, thanks, Christina. And that's a nice executive summary of what happened in 2018, what we anticipate in 2019, and how the city's operating, and a lot of good information in a very short period of time. So if you've got a little bit of time to watch that, you can do it at your leisure. We have a budget meeting coming up in our budget process on April six, uh, April, March 16th, a Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. Again, everyone is invited. It's, I guess esoteric is what I'd call it. Kevin loves it. The rest of us endure it, but it would, it would be good for citizens to come once in a while and find out what's going on, find out how we are able to live within our means and not borrow money and still get everything done, because that's exactly what we do. And the last thing, Representative Grant Worley is going to be at the library this week. Tim, do you remember the date and the time?
Uh, Friday morning from 10 to 12.
Friday morning from 10 to 12, Grant Worley will be at the Warren Public Library with his staff to answer questions, give you an idea of what's happening downstate. It's nice to have our representatives come and visit us, so if you have the opportunity to stop in, Friday morning from 10 to 12 at our library. And that's all I have this evening. Clerk Josie, anything? Thank you. Treasurer?
Yeah, we got a open house. The Winfield Township has one on Saturday between 11 and 2. If you guys want to go get a, they provide a light lunch, and you can kick, uh, kick some tires in some of the tractors, and they have some handouts and information, and you get to meet some of the players.
Thank you, Larry. Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
I just wanted to mention our new community events sign, which I saw operating for the first time on Wednesday, when it very nicely announced the State of the City address. I thought it looked pretty good. Over the weekend, it just had the time and the temperature. And today, we've got a couple of our events posted, mostly the ones that the mayor just mentioned. It also says, "Welcome to Warrenville," which I like. So it, I think it looks good. It's the, the final step in our Route 56 Streetscape project that has been going for pretty much the last 10 years. I joined that, that work group in 2009. It is nice to see that completed after an awful lot of work. It looks good. I can't wait for weather that's a little bit more spring-like, to see more people out there using some of our new trail information and wayfinding signage and just taking advantage of this new city amenity. So, great work on that to all the city staff that have been working on this for a decade.
Thank you, Alderman. It certainly turned out well, and it was exciting to come down Batavia Road and see it lit up for the first time. We've waited a long time for that. Anyone else? Okay, Administrator?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Very good. And Attorney?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Barb. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the March 4th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Berry. Alderman Ashau, or, excuse me. Alderman Davalos.
I'd like to remove Item A.
Okay. Any other changes? Motioner, seconder, agree to that removal?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. We have a set of minutes that need approval this evening also. Alderman Wilson?
I'd like to abstain from the vote on this since I was not here on the 19th.
Okay, for the minutes, very good. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 19th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second on those minutes. I need discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6B. Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2019-06, approving a preliminary and final plat of subdivision for Forest Grove Riverview subdivision at the southeast corner of Batavia Road and Fourth Street. C. Accept City Attorney's Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2019-07, amending the city code regarding hotel tax. D. Accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's Recommendation and pass resolution R-2019-08, approving the reduction of the public improvements bond for the Herrick Woods project and placing the project into the two-year maintenance period. E. Receive and file minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting of November 27th, 2018. F. Receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held of, uh, Regular Meeting of January 8th, 2019. G. Receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting of January 23rd, 2019. H. Receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting of February 21st, 2019. I. Receive and file report of invoices paid up to February 27th, 2019 in the amount of $57,101.74. And J. Authorize expenditure of $148,742.18 for invoices due on or before March 18th, 2019. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bromel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Berry. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Bevier.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you, Josie. We will go back to Item 6A. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to accept Plan Commission's recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-2019-05, approving special use permits for a planned unit development for the entire property, the site work phase, and Phase 1, and a final plat of subdivision for the Everton mixed-use development at the southeast corner of Route 59 and Ivan Albright Street.
Second by Alderman Berry. Discussion. Alderman Ashauer?
The, I just asked for that to be take off, taken off, because I don't support this development.
Okay. Alderman Bevier?
Yeah, just want to be, be supporting all the people in my ward, and I'll be voting on this. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Nay.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Bevier.
Nay.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Nay.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
And mayor votes aye. Motion carries. Regular agenda, we have an informational presentation by the city attorney regarding Holland and Knight Legal Services from October 2017 through December 2018. Barb?
Good evening. John suggested that I sit, and we have more of a conversation than a formal presentation. This is intended to be more informational for all of you. We have just loved working with you. We've enjoyed the first 15 months of our work with you, and it's been great working with you, the council, and with all the staff. We've found everybody to be terrific, very helpful, have really helped us get up to speed, and we've enjoyed the work that we've done. We put together a report for you, just a short executive summary, and then a series of pages to outline the major projects that we've worked on, some of the major initiatives that we've been involved in, and the things, you know, most of this is things that have come to us through staff, that they have been directed by you folks to take care of and do, and other things that are management and administration items. And I'm not going to talk through all of these, because, one, the mayor covered a lot of this last week, but I think it was, it's, was exciting to us as we went through and prepared the report to see how many things that we had worked on together, and how many things that got accomplished in the, in the, our initial 15-month time. You're a busy community. You've got a lot going on, and your staff has done a lot of work as well, and done a lot of really good work, and we're happy to be a resource and be able to support that. Our, our overall role is, was established in our engagement letter with you, and the scope of services, the, to serve as general counsel, to work with you, the city council, with other city officials, with any boards and commissions of the city, as well as with staff, of course. And those are our general responsibilities, just to consult with all of you and work with you. We have performed a wide range of corporate legal matters, including Freedom of Information Act, Open Meetings Act, gift ban, conflicts of interest. We've had some, a few parliamentary issues here and there, as you have noticed. Ordinances, resolutions, contracts, agreements, licensing, utilities, all of, all of those things are, kind of fall in that umbrella of, of the city's work as a municipal corporation. We were retained, as you know, on October 1st of, last of 2017. We've listed here some of the primary folks that you have seen, either the council, you've seen some of, some of this group. Staff has seen all the other folks that are in the names here. Then there's a, there's about a five or six other people who have worked on your matters to various degrees, but more as a, as a resource that we pull them in for help here and there. But these are folks that you will see on a more regular basis. Peter and me, you have seen. Brooke Lennaman, you see a lot. Ben Schuster is our Freedom of Information pro, and Megan Colley is our real estate person. Stuart Weiss helped us when we, when, with some of the election setup issues this year. You've, you've all met Phil Schreiber, who was here last year to talk about sexual harassment issues and how to avoid that. Our partner Larry Zanger is a, is a, is really our technology contract pro, and he was very valuable in the negotiation of the ERP contract. And then we have Paralegal who helps us with a little bit of everything, and he's terrific. We work with you on a structure that, you know, we discussed when we were engaged. We work on a lot of general corporate matters for the city under a retainer amount that's set, that we, that you pay every month, and it's a flat rate. And over the course of a year's time, it should come out about right. It should come out to be fair to both sides, and even sort of payment of value and the amount of hours, it should be, it should be equal. There shouldn't be, you know, a gaming on either side, where the, it shouldn't be one side's getting a great benefit at the, to the detriment of the other. But to be fair to both sides, and to try to, try to make that come out even over a period of time, helps the city avoid spikes in cash flow and payments, makes it easy to plan, and so that's what, that's what we do. Planning and zoning projects, a number of those, major private projects are, those are outside of the retainer, and as we go along, those, there are some of those that are reimbursable items. There's some special projects we've taken on that are non-retainer, and if there's litigation, that would also be outside of the retainer. Within our retainer, the, the next page is attending all of these meetings, the regular city council meetings. We do a lot of day-to-day work with all departments, including Public Works, a lot of contracting issues. We've prepared during this window of time 42 ordinances for you and 60 resolutions, which is, means you're busy and you're doing a lot of, a lot of work, and we're happy to help with that. We've also done work in our first 15 months in terms of updating various forms of, of documents and formats. So certain ordinances and resolutions that are routine and come up a lot, we've developed some models for that, model contracts. We've worked on some bid documents and then things like applications for permits, the, the police department's ticket citation form, all of those kinds of things where we've worked, worked to try to help you with some of those standard things to make the city as a whole efficient. There's a lot of planning and zoning projects that, that you have had come before you. I'm not going to spend time talking about those, because you all know what they are. The one thing that I think is of note that where we have done some special work is in terms of the format of the ordinance that's used for special permit and PUD-type approvals. We suggested some updates to the format that has been used by the city over the years, with the goal of making the decisions as clear as we can, and also making them defensible in the event of, that there were a legal challenge, a lawsuit. We, we've recommended some changes to help you to position yourself properly for that. So, so that kind of covers the planning and zoning side. Administration and finance has just had a broad range of tasks this year that we've helped with. The, the ERP project, which I mentioned, and we had our special help from our technology guru, and then some of these other matters which you have seen come before you. Most of these are things that you've acted on and fall in the area of administration and finance. Real estate also is a, you just have a lot of different kinds of real estate matters. You, you have some of these small parks that are appropriate for transition to the park district, so we're working on the Plum Path Park, which is kind of down the street. The Warren Tavern lease is due for renewal, and so we've started some work on that. The, we've worked on things like model forms of easement for the, when the city needs to acquire an easement, say for a water line or sewer line. We have some model forms that we've adapted for Warrenville's use, and we've worked on a lot of, there's been a lot of activity in the mobile cellular phone leasing market. And they come and they go. Those things kind of go in cycles. We seem to be in a cycle of activity, and so there's been several of those projects, and worked a lot with Phil on those. And then staying on the technology, on the next page, you'll see that three of the five things that are listed there are things pertaining to the, to the small cell initiatives and the changes in state law and federal law, what the FCC is doing. And so we've done, prepared you some amendments to your code to address the small cell issue, which you have passed. We've updated permit and application forms, and we've also prepared a form of poll attachment agreement. So if a carrier wants to use a city light standard or such, we have created that agreement. The other thing that's of some note, I think, on the Public Works page is just the, you had the Camco construction contract, which was completed before our time. The work was done before we came onboard, but there were some ongoing disputes there, and so we worked with Phil and Christina to try to work through those outstanding issues, and we were able to successfully get those resolved. So that's one thing off the city's plate as well. Other Public Works-related things that we've done are listed on this next page. Just a lot of, you can see, there's things relating to model policies, model forms, standard practices, which helps you streamline your work and the staff's work. And you do a lot of intergovernmental agreements, which is, which is terrific, including IDOT, the County of DuPage, DuCom, and the Forest Preserve District, all of which are things that you've seen on your agenda, so I'm not going to belabor those. Contracting is another big issue. When we were interviewed, we talked a little bit about the model forms of bidding and construction contracts, and design professional consultant contracts that we've developed over the years. We have implemented successfully a number of those major forms. The, we have a very small project construction form, kind of a medium project form of up to 100,000, up to maybe a million bucks, and then some contracts for hiring your architecture engineers and your other kinds of consultants that you might use, which might be a planner or some other kind of designer, or some other kind of consultant. It's a form that's adaptable, and there's a short version for a smaller project, a large, more complex version for a complex project. We've worked with staff, and, and we're now at the point where they are getting pretty comfortable, I think, working with the forms, and they put together the, the contracts, and we might take a quick look, but, but those are, are, I think, working very well. And this is, has a couple of good things. One is it makes it easier and more efficient for staff to implement the contracts, and two, these forms are designed to be city-protective, rather than protecting other players in the construction business or the contracting business. You know, the AIA form might be a little bit favorable to the architect. The engineer's form might be a little favorable to the engineer. These are forms that are favorable to the city, fair but favorable to the city. And so, so we're excited to see you being able to implement those forms. Police Department has also been busy, and they've had a lot of code amendments that we've worked on that you can see here. We've also worked on the, as I mentioned, the citation and ticket forms. That was a complete overhaul. And also a lot of intergovernmental agreements on the police side of the House. Homeland Security Training with College of DuPage, the NIPASS agreement, and the Police Service Fiat Agreement. So that, that was a lot of good work to help the police with their, with their efforts. The other initiative on the police side was the massage establishment regulation and enforcement issues, and we've been working with them on, in terms of the code. And also, when you go to the next page, on the litigation-type matters, we assisted with the hearing process for one establishment that, which was brought up on charges to revoke the license. The mayor was a hearing officer, and we supported him in that effort. And then we've continued to work on, with the police department on any issues relating to massage establishment license applications as they arise. I've already talked a little bit about the Camco construction issues that we've resolved, and, you know, the benefit of the, of the forms that we've prepared for contracting to help you reduce your contracting risk on an ongoing kind of basis. We've also been involved in some training. We provided the sexual harassment training here at the city council that, that you recall. Coming up, I'm going to give a shameless plug for our local government seminar, seminar, which we do every other year following the municipal election, so save the date of May 2nd. It will be at the Ravinia Festival, which I recognize is a bit of a drive, but we've timed the start, so it should be after rush hour. So you should, the travel shouldn't be quite as challenging. And so that's another opportunity. We'll look forward to seeing you all there. The, John has attended several of our roundtables that we hold on a periodic basis from our administrators and managers. It gives us a chance to talk about issues that are common to our clients, and some of the newer initiatives, and gives the managers a chance to sort of exchange ideas about what they're doing. And so we've been delighted to have John be an active participant in those meetings. You also should all be getting our alerts and newsletters from time to time. I hope you are. If you are not, let us know. And I hope you all got the seminar save-the-date notice. If you did not, let me know, because I want to make sure that you're on the list. And then we just, we included a page here of our, what we think are our goals and objectives for service to you. We value the opportunity to serve the city, and we have tried to incorporate these goals and objectives in what we do, because we think that they are responsive to some of the concerns that the city had when you went out in your selection process, and as we met with you during the interview process and during the transition process, we could see that there were certain themes. And so we have tried with this page. see that there were certain themes, and so we have tried with this page of goals and objectives to, those are some of the things that we're trying to do to work effectively with you. And then I'll just, I'm not going to bore you and spend a lot of time with the numbers, but we do have a two-page summary here of the 15 months of service, and the first page of that shows you what is the, within the retainer. This is all the general corporate work that we do for all different areas of the city. They're allocated and divided by different categories of work that we anticipated that you would have, so that you can see where our level of effort is, where we're spending time in meetings, where we're doing contract review. You can see what we do in connection with zoning, subdivision, building code issues, liquor issues, Plan Commission, community development, there's some finance time, utilities, Public Works, police. You know, we tried to, to divide this so that you can see where we're spending our time, how many hours we're spending, and what that we've calculated on the right. It shows you the value of our hours at our hourly rates at, for those hours spent, so that you can see what the cost is. And then if you go to the bottom, you can see what the city has paid. Second line from the bottom is the amount paid by the city, which is 202,500 for those 15 months, but the total work cost value of the work was 269,710. So, there is a differential there, that's our cost, that's part of our learning curve, getting to know you and working with you. You know, we're in this for the long haul with you, and that's part of the investment that we make, because we value the relationship with the city. The retainer amount was set back in September of 2017, when we were retained, and it was our best shot at what's an appropriate number? What do we think the city's level of legal business will be? We've worked under that number for the last 15, 17 months, and, you know, the goal is we want to have a number that's fair to everybody, that's fair to both sides, and so we now have some experience, some time and experience with this, and, and we'll be chatting with John a little bit about whether that's still a good number, whether there ought to be a tweak to that number, an adjustment to that number. The last page just gives you an idea of what are the things that are outside the retainer. It lists the projects that we have undertaken outside the retainer, and these are things that are the much more substantial things that you can't budget or plan for as well, because you don't know when they're going to come, and you don't know how long they're going to last. So, the ERP contract was a major effort for a very, in a very compressed timeframe. Election work comes and goes, and depending on the year, it, it varies. The development matters are, depend very much on the nature of the development, the kind, the complexity of the project, and real estate matters are also outside the retainer, because those are similarly things where you don't know how much negotiation there is with the other side of a transaction. So that shows you that. There's several lines where we show that there's money that's been placed on deposit to cover the city's third-party costs, which includes us and anybody else that the city would be using. So those are shown, and then that shows you that there is, you know, some savings there by implementing that process. So with that, I don't want to take up too much of your time, and, but wanted to give you that overview. I'm happy to take questions, either now or if you have questions later.
Okay. Thank you, Barb. Chair, sir?
Would you, would you explain again about the minus actual debt money?
Sure. Sir, if you look at, on the page that shows the retainer, which is the first page of the financials, you can see the total hours worked, and then you can see the total actual fees. So that 41 and a half hours for general representation, that is 41 hours times the hourly rate of the various lawyers who worked on the different projects within that category. So that, applying our hourly rates, gets you to $12,844.50. So each line does that math exercise. You get to the bottom, and you see that the value of our time spent on the hours that we worked is 259,975. There was also a transition line, which our agreement is that's our responsibility, that's not something the city would pay, but when you add those two together, that shows you our level of effort for the city. So that's the 269,710. Does that make sense?
So you're saying that, that, okay, so you're saying that that's monies that it's, in other words, a discount rate?
Well, in essence, the, any differential between the retainer amount and the value of the time we actually spend, if it's more, it's on us.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I think if anybody really wanted to know what the City Attorney does, you got a pretty good idea tonight. I think it's an example of what I emphasized in my State of the City address. You see a lot of things going on in the community, but there are so many things going on behind the scenes that make us efficient, make us professional, and make things get done in the way they should get done. And Barb, you've been a great help, I think, in upgrading a number of the ways that we do things, make us a more professionally carefully-run, efficient operation. We've found a lot of legacy things that needed to be changed. I'm grateful that we got those things done, and I think it's certainly safe to say that we do a far better job now in service delivery, a more careful job than we did before you came onboard, so thanks for your help.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
It's good. We hope to continue. Anyone else? Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I want to second that. It has been a great pleasure working with you, Barb, and I know that the staff speaks very highly of your professionalism and your attention to detail, and that has been one of the tremendous benefits of this change that we've made here in the city. My question for you is, this was the initial transition year. One of the many things that you focused on in this presentation had to do with how many of our forms needed to be updated, and how many of our, you know, standard documents needed to be revised by your law firm. So I guess my question is, do we expect to be as much work to you every year, or was this, would you say, probably an atypical year? And it's, it's very hard to predict. Of course, the law changes, of course, our needs are going to change, of course, we don't know what sort of level of litigation or real estate projects we're going to have going forward, but just in terms of the amount of corporate work.
It's a good question, and I think that, that the next year will tell a little better, because I think there was a certain amount of work that was, where I know different departments felt like they had things they wanted to do, but knowing there was a change in the era that they, they held them, and so we found in the, particularly in the first eight or nine months, that we had quite a lot of, of projects that were things, people said, "I've been wanting to get to this for a little while." I suspect we're still going to see that for a while. I think people, people kind of come to the next thing, and as staff closes out one thing, they're, you know, looking at the next thing on their list. So, so I don't know that it will be a big falloff from that, because I think that, that it takes a while to, to do things, and you're always going to find something else that you want to, you want to upgrade, and the goal is that over time, you can do it on a gradual basis, and just try to do a keep-up, rather than having to do everything at once. So I, so I don't, I don't know that it will be appreciably different.
Okay. And it does, it does make it more efficient when you can make incremental changes as you go along, instead of having to throw everything out and start from scratch, because something is so outdated that you can't work with it. So, I guess my secondary question is, we've just gotten our budget documents. I don't think you're going to be present necessarily at the budget workshop, so my question is, just in terms of the legal fees, have you taken a look at what our budgeted amount is, and does that seem reasonable to you?
I have not seen the budget document yet.
Okay. Well, that's something I'd-
We'll have a conversation with John about that.
-just like you to follow up on at some point before the budget workshop, just to hear your feedback on that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? All right. Thanks again, Barb.
Thank you.
We have nothing under unfinished business, no new business, no need for a closed session. We have one more motion that will be required, however. Alderman Goodman?
To adjourn.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for your attention.